Thank you for being here tonight. So I think even though people are still coming in, that we probably need to go ahead and get started with things. And so I want to introduce our special guests again this evening. For some of you who have been on previous town hall meetings, you know Dr. Gann and Ms. Pivik already. So I will introduce them again. We have this evening Dr. David Gann, who is the Medical Director for the Cherokee Nation Public Health. Is that right? Did I get that title correct?
Yes, thank you.
If I'm remembering. And then Ms. Lisa Pivik, who is also the Executive Director of our Public Health. And I also want to introduce our Tribal Councilwoman for the Alarge People, Mike Holly, on the Tribal Council, Counselor Mary Baker Shaw, who is also here. You are still muted, Mary.
I'm gonna unmute. Listen, OCO, Counselor Coats and I are so excited and delighted that you're with us tonight.
We are indeed. And Mary, I guess with those introductions and with thanks to everyone for being here, I'm gonna go ahead and just turn this over to you because you have questions, right? That you have been collecting today?
I actually do. But you know, I'm gonna turn this back over to Dr. David Gann. I believe he has a slideshow that he wanted to share with us. Dr. Gann, would you like to lead with that slideshow?
Sure. And again, if you've been on these meetings before, I'm just going to show you just some of the data real quick. Take about 10 minutes and give you a little more in-depth update on what's happening in Cherokee Nation with the coronavirus. If you see the bags under my eyes, you'll note that it's busy. So let me get this going. There we go. So you recognize the meadow lark up in the corner there. When things get stressful, I think about northeast Oklahoma, the meadow lark is around all summer long. Reminds me of the good things that we have to be grateful. If you've never seen a meadow lark at the top of a tree, singing its little lungs out, it's fantastic. So globally, things are pretty dire. I did get a sneak peek at the numbers for tomorrow. The number of new cases tomorrow is about 560,000. So this graph here, the bars are the daily number of cases. And the blue line, it's the seven-day moving average of number of cases. You can see over the last six weeks that that line has gotten steeper and continues to decline. Likewise, the number of deaths globally continues to increase. I think it's about 9,500 deaths will be reported tomorrow globally. Pretty rough going. A lot of the cases are coming from Europe and Russia and still getting plenty of cases from South America. The France is really out of control. India's done a really good job. They were peaking at about 80,000 cases a day, and they're heading down. They have a tremendous public health infrastructure and went all hands on deck as quickly as they could and they got things under control. If you remember, they have about 1.4 billion people in India. So huge population, multicultural, over 100 different languages that they speak. You can imagine the challenges. I'm sure you've seen the news about France and Germany and UK doing some partial or full shutdowns temporarily to get the virus under control. They're really struggling, but they'll get it done. And this is an interesting graph. The bright green line, this is a cumulative number of cases in the United States. And the brown line is Europe. So you can see how Europe was staying calm and the United States was picking up. And then we calmed down a little bit and Europe just took off. So their number of cases is really increasing rapidly. Keep them in our prayers. So the United States, where you can see the slope of our curve there for six or seven weeks now, pretty steady increase in the number of cases. Tomorrow will be at about 100 and about 104,000 new cases. So we'll be up even higher. So this line is continuing to go up as we struggled to get these cases under control. What's been really interesting is the number of deaths in the United States has stayed pretty flat, still high, about 850 deaths per day over the last couple of weeks on average. So hopefully, your hospital infrastructure will stay intact and we'll be able to continue to take care of these people as they become ill. And also, most of the cases in the United States now are in a younger age group. But that younger age group is slowly spreading it to the more vulnerable populations that we have. So cautiously optimistic that today we still have things under control and hopefully it'll stay that way. So the main states in the United States contributing to the daily case count, and this isn't based on population, it's just the raw number of cases. Texas and Illinois and California have been at the top for a while. Wisconsin has climbed up this week. Now Florida goes up and down. And then you've heard in the news about Michigan, Wisconsin really having some issues getting things under control. This map is from the Harvard Global Health Institute, and they're usually a day or two behind. So you can see this is data through Monday. And you can see the number of states were up to 26. It got down to as low as three about two months ago. And then things are picking back up nationally with the number of new cases. Oklahoma is sitting at number 23, at 28 cases per 100,000 per day on average. We got down to about 26. We were up as high as 33, down to 26. And now we're going back up. And I have some more data to show you on that. So here's Oklahoma. Today, we had 1,200 cases reported. And again, the gray bars are the daily number of cases. And the blue line is the seven-day moving average. And so we had a couple of days of relief in here. And now we're climbing back up. And we'll see how things go. We did have a meeting with the State Health Department today. Lisa and I met with their two top epidemiologists to discuss how the data was flowing. The state's having a few issues. There's so much data coming in and they're getting tired. Their computer systems for handling the data are old and suffering from, you know, 20 years of neglect in public health infrastructure. But they're working hard and they remain our partners in all of this. We have an excellent relationship with the state and with our county health departments. And here's the number of deaths in Oklahoma. It continues to climb. Today, we had 17 deaths reported. And the day before, it was 22. So you can see that seven-day moving average is slowly climbing up. What's concerning me the most is that we're running out of hospital beds in Oklahoma this morning. The state reported there are only 76 ICU beds in the whole state that were available out of over 1,000. That's not all COVID-19 beds. There are people are in ICU for many other reasons. So the state has a surge plan for when the hospitals get full. And what they're gonna do, I can tell you that Hastings, our ICU, we have six beds in our ICU. It's been full for about a week and a half. And you know, as soon as someone gets discharged, someone else moves in. And we're having to transfer patients to Arkansas and Missouri because Tulsa, Tulsa hospitals don't have room for patients. But we're dealing with it and taking care of the people in Oklahoma. We have 55 counties in the red. This changes by three or four every day. We've been climbing the last several days and I predict we'll continue to climb at least over the next two weeks. As the Halloween being on a Saturday, there are a lot of parties and a lot of viral spread. People like to get married on Halloween. I wasn't aware. And so we had several weddings where we're concerned about outbreaks that are developing there. So those cases will start to roll in. We've had several prison outbreaks in Oklahoma. That's contributed to some of the numbers. The schools are really struggling as they spend more time indoors. There's more basketball and the kids are getting the virus, mostly at home, but bringing it to school. And the schools are rapidly identifying those and opening and closing and opening and closing. And the State Health Department in Cherokee Nation is working with our local schools to help them deal with all that. The superintendents are working really hard, struggling to do the right thing. They know the kids need to be in class, but the kids are getting sick and their parents are getting sick and their grandparents are getting sick. So we're keeping an eye on them, doing what we can. Cherokee Nation, we're up to 3,600 cases with 601 active cases. Now, these are people that have tested in Cherokee Nation Health Services. So this isn't the general population. This isn't all Native Americans in our 14 counties. These are just our health services. And the numbers are going up. Those red bars show that every time we have another 500 cases, so you can see the bars are getting closer together as we progress. And it's hard to see the slope of the line there, but the bars are cumulative number of cases. And things are really picking up steam this week. So you can see here, the blue bars are the daily number of cases. And the red dotted line is that seven-day moving average. On Monday, we broke a new record with 110 new cases. And on Tuesday, we've had 55 cases so far, but we still have tests pending from then. Probably another 20 or so will show up by the morning. And then today, we've had 57 new cases. And those are all the rapid tests. We have a tremendous capacity to do the Abbott ID Now, which is a PCR test. It's relatively accurate, more so than the antigen test that you might hear about. And we're offering a lot of testing. So both these, yesterday and today, will probably be up for 70 to 80 cases for each of those days. So we're working hard. We're doing the contact tracing and helping people when they're stuck at home. And the Chief of Staff exhausts himself daily, making sure these people are taken care of. We're doing a good job. We've had 31 deaths amongst our patients and Native Americans in our area that we've been able to keep track of, Cherokee citizens. Each and every one is tragic, and we're doing everything we can to keep our elders safe. This is number of cases per week. You can see for this week, we're already up to 231. And that's about two days' worth of data. So we should be, excuse me, around 400 or so by the end of the week. It's really, really taken off here. Now, if you look at our testing, the blue bars are the daily number of tests that we do. You can see we don't do a lot on the weekends. This is mostly the emergency room that's doing those tests. On Monday, we did 602 tests, which is by far a record. We have drive-throughs available, drive-through testing available Monday through Friday, 8 to noon at all of our clinics, at nine different sites. And, you know, and they stay open later if there are people still in line. And they don't turn away anyone. Taking care of our beneficiaries as well as their family members. School teachers and students will get tested. And so you can see our average daily number of tests is up to 300. I think that will continue to rise through the week as demand increases for more testing. This is from our dashboard. In the chat, I will post the link. This is one of the several dashboards that are available. And this is the general population. This isn't Native Americans or just our patients or citizens. So we keep an eye daily on the rate of cases. Cherokee County and Wagner County have been in the orange for a while now, but those numbers are going up. Aeter County is not doing well at 47.6. And we're working with the county health department and with the local leaders to try to help them get that under control. You can see Sequoia County is also very high at 30.9. Muskogee as well. So we're working with everyone. Our health centers are fully functional and providing a full range of services. And our staff, you know, are starting to suffer a little bit with cases and getting quarantined from being exposed. So we're working with our staff on all of that. We have several other dashboards that are publicly available to help describe what's going on. And we weekly put up different dashboards, different ways to communicate what's happening to the general public in their communities. Because that's the only way we're gonna get control of this. Increased testing and contact tracing and helping people make those hard decisions. Counselor Shaw and Coats and I were discussing these really difficult decisions people make about weddings and funerals and birthday parties and, you know, Sunday dinners and going to church. Our churches are opening back up and they're not wearing masks. And the virus is having several outbreaks in churches. And these are hard decisions to make, to tell grandma she can't come over and play with her grandkids because there's too much virus. So we're helping people as best as we can know that our Public Health Department, Lisa will discuss it more, but we're responding. Cherokee Nation Health Services is at the ready. And this morale is good and the resources are plentiful. Indian Health Service is on our side. The State Health Department is working with us tightly. And I'm confident we're gonna, we're gonna push through this and take care of our people. That's it. Thank you. You're muted, Mary.
Yes, thanks, Dr. Gann. That was really informative and I appreciate the graphs. It's easier to follow. Appreciate your detail on that. Lisa, is there anything you would like to add following this presentation? Are you muted, Lisa?
Yeah, I was, now I'm not. Yeah. It said the host had muted me. And not really anything. I want to just let everyone know that we've been very proud that we've been able to take over contact tracing and case investigation as a tribal nation on our own within the boundaries of the state of Oklahoma and their work. And we pride ourselves on getting to the cases almost within 24 hours. Because the goal of contact tracing and case investigation relies on that quick response to quarantine those persons who may spread the virus. And this has been something that we took on in March to do and started. And as this time has gone by, we have gotten better at it and are looking forward to working more with the state as we move through this process. But it certainly has been eye-opening. And I think it has shown a lot to, in relationship to the other kinds of health problems that we have within Cherokee Nation, I think it has shown other decision-makers that lifestyle and behavior changes and predicting human behavior is difficult. And that when faced with something that you have nothing to do but do mitigation measures and rely on people's human behavior, it becomes very tough. And I think we'll take some of the lessons as we move through in the years to come on how we may address chronic disease as well. And hopefully can address that in years to come and have more to share with you.
Appreciate that, Lisa. Thank you. Well, I have a few questions that have been submitted, and I'll just start asking. I will direct them to you. And if I've got the wrong person, you all just let me know. And then you all interrupt me and answer them correctly for me. Lisa, I think this one would be for you. It says, "My child is out of elementary school this week because someone tested positive for COVID in her class. She is to be in quarantine for two weeks. Do I need to be in quarantine too since I picked her up from school and she's my little six-year-old?" Lisa, can you answer that?
Yes. It won't let me unmute myself for some reason. It's every time it says host has to unmute me. So sorry about that. Yeah. So their child's been exposed at school and they've been quarantined for two weeks from their last day of contact with the positive. And we see this every day in all of our school systems. And we see it with every contact that we work with. And that's part of stopping the spread. And what that means is that in most school systems, depending on how they've set up and how they've organized their COVID plan, someone in that classroom may have been within six feet for 15 minutes or more without a mask. Or even with a mask, sometimes some health departments don't count the mask if it's in close proximity because they don't know, they're not assured of the type of mask that they make, that a student may have on. And what the schools do is they send those classroom students home for two weeks to hopefully prevent an outbreak within the school. I know Dr. Gann has said before, the goal is not to keep COVID out of the school because it's going to be there, but the goal is to prevent an outbreak. So we know it's difficult for parents and it's difficult for families, but it's really important to help stop the spread that we comply with those. And that's pretty standard. That is CDC guideline and most, all health departments follow that.
Thank you for that. Dr. Gann, assuming that there will be a vaccine next spring, approximately how many weeks will one have to wait between vaccines if there are supposed to be two shots?
The current vaccines that are, seem to be the front runners, the time between the two shots will be 21 days for one of them. I think the other is 28 days. The research is so sparse right now on exactly when, on a range. And that's what we're really pushing for. Because right now, we're being told that the first vaccine we will get, which may be as soon as the end of November, has to be exactly 21 days, not 20 days and not 22 days. And I think we'll get a little bit of leeway by the time it comes out. It might be 20 to 22. So we're really worried about that. But the second shot is absolutely necessary, that you really get zero protection from the first one. So if you get the first one, you have to get the second one. The previous vaccines we've used show that the timing of the second one, that you can get it too early, but you can't really get it too late. But you're not fully protected until you get the second one. You don't know what the research will show on the coronavirus vaccines, but we'll see. I think we've been planning for weeks, again, hand in hand with the state, with Indian Health Service on getting the vaccine out. And it's gonna be slow-going. That the vaccine will be given to the most vulnerable population first and to first responders and healthcare workers, and then slowly roll it out. The, I predict that, you know, if we start getting vaccine by the end of November, December, it's gonna be, you know, a good six to seven months before we have that elusive herd immunity. And that's assuming uptake. And one of the other challenges is that the, looks like the vaccine we will get has to be stored at minus 80 degrees. And that's a challenge. And once it's taken out of the cold, cold storage for use, I think it's about six hours that you have. So we can't just have 100 vaccines and hope that 100 people show up because it's gonna be a precious stuff. So a lot of planning to go around with that. A lot of messaging too, because there are people that are worried about the vaccine. So I've had some really frank discussions with our leadership that we can't offer a vaccine unless we're convinced it's safe and effective. And leadership seems to be amenable to that. That if our experts here at Cherokee Nation feel that it's not safe, that they'll, they'll listen to us. I've told a lot of people, my canary in this coal mine is Dr. Fauci. That if he takes the vaccine, I know it's safe and it's gonna be effective. And I'm, you know, what I'm seeing in the news from the vaccine experts around the country is they're pretty sure it's not gonna come out until it's safe and effective. It's not gonna be pushed out too early. So a lot of work going around the vaccines. Mr. Brian Hale at Cherokee Nation Health Services is spearheading that. And he's got his finger on the pulse. And then, you know, several times a week, there's the big conference calls about managing this. Really impressed with the work Indian Health Services, Indian Health Service has done in Oklahoma with working with us and with the state. And so as long as we get the vaccine, we've got the cold storage units. That was, you know, to get a refrigerator that keeps things at minus 80, that's hard work. And we've got several of them installed or on the way. And staffing plan, communications plan, how it's gonna go. So when it comes, we're gonna be ready.
I'm so glad to hear that. Lisa, are we in the second wave of this pandemic? And if so, what does that mean?
I, I'm, okay, I'm not sure. I'm still, I'm not muted, am I? Okay. I actually don't know if we're in the second wave of this pandemic. I mean, I hear both that we are still in the first wave, that the second wave, you know, you may look at that for other countries across the world. But Dr. Gann's probably better at answering that question as that's what he does all day long, is look at the numbers and try to make the decisions of where we're at. So I know we've gotten that question quite a bit. Dr. Gann, are you?
Yeah, if you look at the United States as a whole, it's kind of academic if we're in this, you know, a second phase or a second wave, do we ever actually get out of the first one? And that's, you know, I don't think that's all that important. You know, when the virus first hit and several local metropolitan areas of the United States got overrun. And that's where all the cases or the deaths came from. So it looks like the curve goes up real high. But it wasn't widespread. So where we are now is that they got those places under control and the virus slowly spread throughout the United States. And now we're in another surge. But the surge has multiple more focal points than before. So we have widespread community transmission throughout Oklahoma. And, and, you know, the map that I showed you, the United States, you know, right down the middle of the United States, there's widespread community transmission everywhere. And so I keep saying to our people over and over, if you're with someone who doesn't live in your house with you, mask and distance and wash your hands. Doesn't matter who it is, grandma, grandpa, your best friend, your pastor, if you're with them, they don't live in your house with you, then do that. Those are hard things to do. And they're not being done. So the virus continues to spread. I can definitely tell you, we're in a surge right now. I don't know where the peak is, both in Oklahoma, both in northeast Oklahoma in the United States and globally. A huge surge. And the time to act is now. You know, from a public health perspective, we talked a lot about prevention. The time to act was several months ago. And we didn't want to collectively, or we couldn't, or it was just didn't want to make the sacrifices that were required. So as the numbers go up, then we can convince more people that, okay, I'm not gonna go to church this week. And, or I'm not gonna have the birthday party. And hopefully, this will get under control soon. Flu's coming, cold weather's coming. So we're anxious about that and we're preparing.
Dr. Gann, how are the signs and symptoms of COVID different than the flu?
You know, what I've, what I've seen here, the, it's variable, right? So most people with the flu, when they get a, you know, a hard case of the flu, it's a sudden onset, very high fever, 103, 104 degrees and muscle aches and pains. With, we see with coronaviruses that for most people, the onset is a little more slow. There are still some people who suddenly get very ill. The temperature generally isn't much more than 101. There's still the muscle aches and pains, but there's also diarrhea, nausea and vomiting. We see a lot of that. And the loss of taste and smell. You know, that seems to be really unique for the coronavirus. And for some people, they just have one symptom. We've had several cases where the only symptom was pink eye. And that's described in the literature on coronavirus. For some people, it's just a tickle in the back of their throat. We have people that don't have symptoms that we know. Again, the research shows that those people are quite contagious. And a lot of people, as we hear it every day, I thought it was just allergies. In northeast Oklahoma, we've got plenty of stuff in the air to give people allergies. So we try to tell people that, number one, we've got testing everywhere. So don't ignore your symptoms. Go get tested. If you have any inkling that this is a little different from your allergies, don't ignore it. Go get tested. Or just give us a call. We can talk to you about it and help you make that decision.
Thank you. Dr. Gann, this one is for you. Is the medicine President Trump took for COVID, is it available to the citizens of Cherokee Nation?
So we do administer remdesivir. That's one of the medicines that indicate for that recent change. So we're using it. Um so we're using it in our patients who are admitted to the hospital mostly because of pneumonia and they have low oxygen levels in their blood. So we give them remdesivir. We also give them uh the convalescent plasma. So uh antibodies that are collected from people who have recovered from coronavirus. Um all of our patients are offered that and most of them accept that. We are also part of a randomized controlled clinical trial to give remdesivir as an outpatient. And we've enrolled a few patients in that. You know, we have a really outstanding institutional review board to make sure that this is done safely. And we have an infectious disease doctor, Dr. Jorge Mira, who's in charge of this. And it's comparing um giving remdesivir to people, they come to the hospital, get their remdesivir, and then they go home. And that's uh that's uh not allowed except under a clinical trial by the FDA. So we don't, one thing that's not been approved and is not available is the uh the monoclonal antibodies. You heard of that? So they take convalescent plasma and they isolate the antibodies for coronavirus and give that. We don't have that available. So that's, Dr. Mira is on top of that, and he um really explains it well to all of us when to use certain drugs and when not to. And uh and these are all guidelines from multiple infectious disease societies in the United States and the FDA. And we don't do anything that's not backed by some research, for sure.
Thank you. Uh Lisa, I hope I'm saying this correctly, but it says, why should we even wear a mask outside if getting fresh air is good for our immune system?
So um we get this question quite a bit from folks, but one of the things, you remember, a mask protects the other person. You're not protecting necessarily yourself, you're protecting other persons. So the purpose of masking is when you're in close proximity to others. And where if you're in an area that you're gonna be in for quite a bit of time and you're going to be talking, laughing, talking loudly, singing, any of those things, those um particular particles can gather in the air. So those are one of the reasons you're gonna wanna wear a mask outside. Now, I go running, and when I go running, I run alone and I run, well, uh six feet away from others, and I don't wear a mask when I do run. Now, if I were running with another person or I went out in the park with other people in which I was gonna be sitting and talking with them, I would wear a mask at that time because I it's important to protect the other people around us. Now, being outside does indeed help, obviously, and um I believe that that the most important part of it, though, i- is exercising that judgment for when you're close enough to someone that you can transmit the virus. So I hope that answers the question adequately.
Very good. Thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Gann, what do you think will be the long-term effects of a patient who has a severe case of COVID?
Yeah, some more research is coming out on that. Um the most common long-term effect that's been described is uh continued fatigue. So at three months, about sixty percent of patients with severe disease still have that fatigue and hard to get around. And then there's a shortness of breath that people will continue to have. There's some description of actual scarring of the lungs in some people, but you don't have a good uh percentage of how many people suffer from that. The global um health societies are starting to define a post-COVID syndrome. So to actually have a definition for that so it can be studied. And they're making recommendations for staffing post-COVID clinics, so clinics designed just to take care of people suffering the long-term effects. There's some description of people with permanent heart damage. Um and then there's some issues with blood clotting that happens during the course of the disease that of course can cause strokes and other injuries to the lungs and other parts of the body. So uh we're really concerned about that. Talking with our patients locally, um see a lot of fatigue and the fatigue sometimes gets combined with that shortness of breath. So you won't know if it's the fatigue causing the shortness of breath or it's the lungs. So the percentage of people with severe disease that have the prolonged effects, looks like it's around thirty percent. Um but the impact of those prolonged effects varies greatly. And and we're still studying, so we don't know if it's gonna last for four months or six months or five years. Uh but I'm very concerned that uh many people are gonna need some specialized care as we learn how to help people deal with those long COVID syndrome, you've heard it called, or long haulers, is another term, it's not used. Uh very concerned about that. I think um I've been working with Dr. Merritt to try to picture what a Cherokee Nation COVID clinic would look like um for people with the chronic problems that.
Dr. Gann, is is Cherokee Nation doing quick tests and who gets them? And what would warrant a quick test? And what do you think about many false positives?
So there are um three kinds of quick tests. And one of them is uh blood that looks for antibodies clinically that's not useful useful at all. No, nobody I know of uses that to diagnose infection with COVID. Um so antibodies don't show up until at least um two weeks after you've been sick. So it's not helpful. The other kind is the antigen test that looks for the protein coat on the outside of the virus. And that's uh there's a brand name called BiNets now, and that's a very common rapid test. Cherokee Nation um doesn't use those within health services. We have those for the high school because it can be useful for screening lots of people very often. Because a swab is just put at the entrance through the nose. It doesn't go way down deep, so it's not very traumatic. Um and it's useful for people that don't have symptoms. So in the Sequoia High School setting, uh it's it's very useful. The other rapid test is a PCR test that looks for the RNA from the inside of the virus, and we call that the Abbott test. The long name is the Abbott ID Now. And we're doing hundreds of those a day. We have widespread availability. We use those for our first responders, for our healthcare workers, for teachers and for students. And um as available, we use it for others. We, those tests take oh about twenty minutes to run, but you get backed up a little bit, but we often get the test results back usually about an hour. And those are put into our healthcare uh software, and our patients have access straight from their phone to look at the results in their medical record. And uh if they can't get access through their phone or their computer, they give us a call and we give them the test results. Now, false positives are really rare for both the antigen test and the um Abbott PCR test. So the, we don't ignore any positive tests. Big issue is false negative tests. So if if someone has symptoms and they test negative, we uh make sure they get seen by a physician and their symptoms are rolled catalog and keep track of them, see if they get better or worse. We have some uh more accurate tests that we send to our reference lab that goes to Dallas, and we have some bigger machines. We don't have a lot of other reagent for in the hospital that for really sick patients who come into the hospital. If they have a negative, you know, Abbott test, then we'll do, it's called a film array. We'll do one of those. The film array also looks for uh eighteen other pathogens that can cause pneumonia. So i- in short, right, a positive test is a positive test. You've got coronavirus. The a negative test, um and you have symptoms, we watch closely.
Thank you. Uh Lisa, if there is a case of COVID in the school, is the school required to tell the parents?
Um, you know, that's a great question because we see that. And so schools are struggling with a couple of things. One is being able to keep their parents informed, but not divulging any per uh protected health information out into the communities and causing, you know, chaos and, well, in in smaller schools, some bullying, so to speak. So what I've seen most schools doing, and I don't think they're required to do that in Oklahoma. Now, that may vary from state to state, and it varies on probably health department rules. But what we've seen in the schools that we've worked with is that many of them are trying to be transparent with their parents. And because they want them to understand the seriousness, and they also want them to understand the decisions that the school decision makers are having to deal with every day. So they will alert the school in some um the parents in some way that there has been a positive test. Um what we have experienced with this is that before the school even sends out the notice, most people already know. Um people tend to be able to, they'll call the school and then it get, they'll call all the people that they were around and let them know. But as far as in Oklahoma, they are not required to tell um that there has been a positive case to my knowledge. Now, Dave, you might correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think they're required to tell that. Um and they're actually pretty nervous about um making sure they don't identify, especially if you think about eastern Oklahoma and our very small rural schools. We have some schools that only have hundred and ten students in there. And so a lot of times what they'll just say is there's been a person within the school system. And that could be staff, that could be teacher, that could be uh bus driver, that could be cafeteria worker, that could be student. Um and let them know in that way and try to keep them updated in that way.
Lisa, another one. If you have to be quarantined, does your employer have to pay you sick leave?
That's a great question because I think that that varies from place to place as well. We've seen every bit of it, and there's um from state to state, I've heard different things and um I I don't know if they have to pay sick leave. I think that depends on where you live and what state you live. Now, at the beginning, I do believe, um and I'm not sure that those if those benefits have expired. That's not something that I really know that much about when it comes to this the benefits for employees. I will tell you that um Cherokee Nation, anybody that gets quarantined or has COVID gets administrative leave and don't even have to use their sick leave. And what we've seen with that is that it really increases compliance for people, and it helps them to be able to stay home and not lose income. The the hardest thing in this in this virus is heartbreaking to watch people who know they're sick and their employer is going to fire them if they don't come to work sick and their employee does, their employer does not care um if they're sick and if they spread it. And that is extremely unfortunate. Um but as far as required to pay sick leave, I would say that depends on the state and the benefits. And then where we are with uh the national um packages that have gone out, um I'm not, you know, I can't be completely positive on that one. Probably have sent me out to check with locally.
Well, thank you for that answer. Uh, Dr. Gann, how many ICU beds do we have? Are most COVID patients being referred to other places? Or are we able to treat them in-house?
We have six intensive care unit beds at Hastings Hospital, and we have three beds that are called step-down units. So what makes an ICU bed uh an ICU bed is really the staffing. So um every patient ICU uh has a nurse assigned to that person, and a nurse will only have two patients. On a regular, what we call the med-surg floor, medical surgical floor, a nurse might have ten patients that they're taking care of. So someone who needs more attention goes intensive care unit. The and then step down is like between med-surg and ICU. So we still have more attention, but they don't have the fancy machines. Um one of the limitations for COVID nineteen patients is having a room with negative pressure ventilation. Um so when we run out of negative pressure rooms, then we might have to transfer a patient. Um the for the ICU, the we're not transferring most patients. We can keep most of them. We can't take care of people with severe lung issues or uh people were worried about uh having had a heart attack. We don't have the specialists here to take care of that. So most of the patients we transfer with COVID nineteen, it's because it's beyond our ability to take care of uh the the uh issues that they're currently having with lungs, heart and whatnot. So um the and that changes day to day. We might have twenty patients show up and we transfer ten. Or we might have uh ten patients show up and we're able to to take care of all of them. Our our doctors don't uh stretch their ability to take care of patients they know they shouldn't, but we we don't send out people because we're too busy. You know, if you've got a bed for them. So our nurses are the best on the planet. They're just incredible, and we have all the personal protective equipment that they need to keep them safe. And they are doing some tremendous things. All of our patients, I recommend, if you're sick, come to Hastings. I don't care if you live uh on the other side of the state. I have so much confidence in our doctors and nurses. They've taken care of hundreds and hundreds of patients with COVID nineteen. They've got that experience as well. Um and it's really impressive.
You know, I I'm aware that we owe, we have a tremendous debt of gratitude to paid our healthcare heroes. I mean, what would happen to all of us if we didn't have them, you know, uh caring for us all? And uh we do all them our special things. Uh this is the last question that I have tonight, and it says here, I heard Cherokee Nation was working with the CDC. Uh also, I heard that we are on an experimental drug program. Is this true and what does it mean? And I'm not sure which one of you two would like to answer that.
I can take the CDC. We we work with CDC on a continual basis. Um so yes, we do work with the CDC. Um we talk to them fairly regularly. We have an actual public health associate that is um working with us here for two years and training and and sharing his experiences in emergency management and work that he's done across the globe. Um we, I sit on the tribal advisory committee for the Centers for Disease Control and so have access to lots of resources. So we we have, I would say, a pretty good direct line with them. Um when they have projects that they're interested in, it's very easy for us to get in touch with them or them to get in touch with us. So we do work with them. I'll let Dr. Gann handle that second question.
Yeah, so for sure, we are not um using any experimental drugs. I described earlier the randomized uh clinical trial that we're participating in with, I think it's twenty-one other health centers. We're the only tribe that's involved, and it has to do with administering remdesivir as an outpatient versus an inpatient, sure that it's safe. We enrolled eight patients last I heard, might be up to ten now, and goes through twenty-page informed consent where a nurse or a doctor sits with the patient, goes through everything. Um and so we're very confident that it's being well run. We haven't had any adverse events. Had one patient that needed needed to be admitted, but um it's a placebo-controlled trial. So we don't know if the patients are getting remdesivir or not getting it. But one person just became more ill from the COVID nineteen, was admitted to the hospital. So no experimental drugs. Um but just using an approved drug in a different way.
Thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Coats, would you like to pick up on the remaining questions and those that are on the screen?
Yeah, we have a couple of questions that have come in. I don't know if uh Dr. Gann and and you, Lisa, have been uh able to look at these, but the first uh that I think has not been addressed yet is if a person has COPD, how can they tell if they have symptoms?
So that can be a li- a little tricky, and I think the um the key is if this, if the symptoms that you normally have with COPD, if they're different, you know, so shortness of breath is rarely the only symptom people have. There's usually the associated sore throat and cough and uh fevers and and all the other symptoms. So the, you know, with having uh a disease like COPD, if you're concerned at all, you have COVID nineteen, get tested. You know, and to know if it's the COVID nineteen that's making you sicker, go to the hospital. See a physician, get checked out very closely and see. So that's really the best you can do.
And I wanted, this is just my personal understanding, and you can you can uh certainly correct me. But it, I think that uh that when people do have something that is a symptom uh of COVID nineteen, and yet it's also a symptom of asthma that you mentioned earlier, allergies or something like that. People should get tested, but as I understand it, uh most of those tests are going to come back negative. Is that correct? That the that the uh that the ratio of positive to uh to negative test is still, um although it's increasing, and we shouldn't uh ignore that.
Right.
That it is still probably most likely that a person is going to test negative when, when they are tested. I try to, to sort of give people an idea of how concerned they should actually be.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So, there's thresholds for the positive test rate that you mentioned. The first one is you want it below ten percent. And from a public health perspective, right, population health, a system trying to take care of a big group of people, that if your rate is below ten percent, then you can adequately describe the amount of virus that's present in your community. That a lot of our decisions are based on how much virus is circulating in the community. So, if the positive test rate is higher than ten percent, you're not testing enough. You're not casting a broad enough net to capture those people. So, as you start to decrease that positive test rate, the next threshold is five percent. But you know, if we can get our positive test rate below five percent, we're catching most of the people who have it in the community. And we can mitigate the, the problems that the virus is causing. So, we can start to decrease the amount of virus that's in the community if we can isolate the people who test positive and do the contact tracing. Get below three percent, which is the third threshold, then you're actually on offense instead of defense and you're going to suppress the amount of virus that's in the community. So, with the amount of virus that we have today in northeast Oklahoma, there's no way we can do enough testing to find everyone. It's just out of control. So, we have to rely on the, they call the non-pharmaceutical interventions, which is masking and hand-washing and distance as we do the testing to do the best we can till we can get the virus down. Still want to do more testing, but if you do the calculations, instead of, we did six hundred tests on Monday, we would need to do about, probably about twelve thousand tests a day, right? We can't do that, it's just impossible. So, so that's from the public health perspective, right? From the individual perspective, who gets tested? People who have symptoms, people who think they've been in close contact, people who have been in close contact. And some people are just curious. And they get, so if you have symptoms and you test negative, we talked about the false negative issues that are there. Because these tests that we use aren't thoroughly researched, we don't know exactly what that number is. But if you have symptoms and you have a negative test, then you need to watch yourself. If you don't have symptoms and you have a negative test, especially if it's a PCR, like the Abbott ID Now or one of our send-out tests to the reference lab, you can be pretty confident that when you got tested, you didn't have COVID-19. What's hard is that, two things, is that if you get it, if I got exposed today, the chance that I will test positive, I won't have any chance until at least two days after that. So, if Lisa and I were in a meeting without masks on and she calls me and says, I just tested positive, I don't run out and get tested because it's going to be negative. But it can take up to fourteen days for, for me to get sick from that exposure. So, I might test negative, five days later, ten days later, day thirteen, I get a sore throat and I test positive. We also know that people are contagious for two days before they have any symptoms at all. So, if you wait until you have symptoms, there's two days that if you're not doing the masking and the hand-washing and distancing, that you can spread it. So, when we have a close contact, the woman asks about her child who was exposed. We, we worry about people who've been directly exposed, so the parents of the child don't need to be quarantined, but the child does. According to CDC guidelines, which we follow, is that people should be tested five to seven days after exposure. So, if they're going to test positive, that's probably when it's going to be, even if you don't have symptoms. If you have symptoms before then, you get tested then, you have a known exposure. So, we can find people before they become symptomatic or people who were never, will never get symptomatic, get them isolated to keep them from spreading the virus. Long answer to your question.
No, it was a great answer and a very nuanced answer and I appreciate your ability to sort of fight through my poorly worded questions.
We have a hotline and we get about forty calls a day to answer those questions because they're hard to answer. Every situation can be different and it gets complex. Like, well, I had a mask on, but I was six and a half feet apart. Or I didn't have a mask, but I was six and a half feet apart, do I need to be quarantined? Well, let's talk about it. What were you doing? Oh, we were singing, right? And that's higher risk than we were watching TV and we're talking. And it's really complicated. Some people don't care and some people are extremely concerned. Like, I passed this person in the hallway at work and I found out they tested positive. And I was wearing a mask, but I said hello. What should I do? And that's completely understandable and we answer those calls all day long, seven days a week. And it's, it's much needed. These are really hard times that we're going through.
We have one last quick question here, which is just what, what did you say your best guess was on when an effective vaccine will be available?
So, what we're hearing, and it changes pretty regularly, Lisa, you've heard all the reports too. Now, they're saying the end of November, but when that comes, we're going to get, you know, a handful of doses. We're going to get, I think they're predicting for Cherokee Nation Health Services, we're going to get about four hundred or five hundred doses. And that's going to be the first dose for four or five hundred people with them, assuming, you know, within twenty-one days, we're going to be able to get the second dose. So, it's going to be a gradual expansion of people. The big question is, when will it be widely available to anyone who wants it? And it's going to be months. So, and that's assuming, you know, the research that's currently ongoing says this vaccine that we're anticipating is safe and effective. And the effectiveness looks pretty good, it's the safety. You know, it's safety trials take generally years, you know, we don't have the time for that. So, even when it's determined that it's, that it's safe and it's going to go through a huge review process, there's going to be continuing, continued monitoring, everyone who gets a vaccine, we're going to have their name and their phone number. And if they have an adverse effect, it's going to be required reporting to the federal government. And if you're old enough, you remember the swine flu vaccine, I think it was nineteen seventy-six, where the president pushed it out too early and the experts said, don't do it. And so, people got hurt and died from the, from that vaccine because it wasn't, didn't go through the studies and the politics pushed it out and not the scientists. So, very wary of that. And that's why Dr. Fauci is, is my, my canary. If he gets a vaccine, then he's not going to be pushed around by anyone. He's not going to take it until it's safe and effective. And he's almost eighty, so he's vulnerable and he, he's going to get it when it's safe.
Okay, well, I think those are the, the questions that we have tonight from the chat. And I want to thank both of you again so much. This is the third time you've been with us, I believe. And you've offered to be with us even more frequently and we will likely take you up on that sometime if that offer is still available to us. We are, we are really grateful for the work that all of you are doing. And please, if you would, to convey that to people throughout the health system who are very stressed and overworked at this time, that there is so much appreciation for all of you and for, for everything that you're going to, to help people to stay healthy and to stay alive. And we just can't thank you enough.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Comments?
Well, I, I second that on thanking Dr. Gann and Lisa. And I'd also like to thank Cherokee Pins for hosting this meeting for us tonight, appreciate it very much. And again, I'd like to remind everybody, remember your three Ws. Walk, keep your distance at least six feet away, wash your hands a minimum of twenty-one seconds with soap, and then make sure you wear your mask. Thank you all for joining us, we sure appreciate you. You all have a good evening now. Thank you.